All right, it's 5:30 on August 21st, 2023. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We'll start with roll call.
Carmen.
President.
Buska.
Yes.
Fortune.
Here.
McConnell.
Here.
Karina.
Yes. Next is the consent agenda, and that includes approval of the agenda, approval of the claims, approval of minutes from August 7th, 2023, approval of application for tax abatement under the urban revitalization plan for Matthew and Lee Dietzbach.
Second.
Buska.
Yes.
Karina.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Fortune.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yes.
Next will be staff reports. We'll start with public work.
Just a project update. Downtown, phases one and two are finished. Phase three will be finished this week. They just have a little bit of concrete to do there yet. Phase four, they have done all the removals and they started pouring curb and gutter today. I don't know when they're going to be finished with that, but they might bounce around a little bit with this coming weekend so they can get some concrete in front of certain businesses. They haven't decided on that yet. And then they started saw cutting in phase five, which would be the last of the sidewalk phases before they start the crosswalks. The Seventh Street West project, they did the topo of the basin out there. Just waiting for results on that. Hopefully have those sometime this week from Scott. And then they have started the water main and sanitary in the intersection of Highway nine and Seventh Street. That should be finished by Wednesday, I believe. And they'll be in there the end of this week or right away next week to pour the concrete back in. Hopefully within a week and a half or so they'll open Highway nine back up. And then for the tower project, they started sandblasting this morning. As you can tell, everything's closed off. You can't see much. It's just a lot of noise. And then we received a $3,330 check from the Iowa DOT for the use of Third Street Southwest for their detour from when the bridge was out, and that'll go right back into the street trust fund.
How much?
$3,330.
Okay. Next, police. Any report for the police?
Nothing that I was aware of.
Yep. All right, thank you. Administration.
Monday, August 28th, there's going to be a free movie at the movie theater. It's sponsored by the Cresco firefighters and open to the surrounding fire departments. And they're trying to promote recruitment of volunteer firefighters and kind of showing what it entails. And they're operating pre-movie popcorn and pop, so they're hoping to get quite a few people. And then they're going to open the fire station before and after the movie if anybody wants to go and look at it, so.
So do you have to think you're going to be a fire person to go see the movie?
No, I think it'd be quite interesting.
Yep. It's open to the public, but that's...
I wanted to make sure what I was committing to.
Yeah. Yeah, if you want, you've got to sign up.
They size you up for a helmet.
So, no, I think, I think it'd be...
Monday.
Monday, August 28th.
Yep.
At 7:00 PM.
And I think it's about an hour and a half long, if I remember.
It would be discussion prior to the movie.
Sure. Sure.
We're just busy with year-end reporting, budget amendments, grant applications, projects. I want to remind you that next meeting will be on Wednesday due to Labor Day, so Wednesday, September 6th. And the council, we just got notice today from the collective bargaining unit that it's time to schedule our wage re-opener for the union agreement. So I'd like, I said that the council would get together first and kind of figure out what you guys are thinking before we poll in Aaron Hilligas. But Aaron and Robin are getting a date scheduled, so I told them the sooner the better.
Helps with budget, sure.
So if you guys want to set up a meeting sometime.
Okay.
Whether you want city clerk there or not is up to you guys.
Okay. Could we do it, for instance, after our next meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Would that be too far away for time schedule or no?
I don't think so because knowing their two schedules, it'll probably be...
Sure. Sure. So next time we meet Wednesday?
Wednesday, would that work for you guys? And you can go into closed session because it's dealing with union negotiations.
Okay.
So I'll put that on the agenda for next time at the end. Okay? That's it.
That's it. Any committee updates?
From Howard County Economic Development, which is, people come from representing all the cities and schools and things like that. Probably one of the most important things, there's a Maddie Poppy concert in Elma on September 3rd, and I put a poster about that up on the bulletin board. And of course, as you've been seeing the scheduling for this coming weekend, tours of the school and that's new addition. The hospital reported, this surprised me, they hired another CRNA, which enables them to even expand their pain management program, which has proven to be very popular. And they have three or four international nurses coming in, and they've actually managed to find housing. But that's a huge addition to their capabilities. Country Winds was sold. And that's what I had done as... I mean, of course, everyone was reporting on sweet corn days and check days, but those have all happened. Anything else, Jason, from the meeting?
Good notes. Any other committee notes?
I got the, the park board met. Basically, one was, since Wendy's retiring at the end of this month, it was Wendy will not have the credit card anymore, and Jamie will be the one on the credit, which we probably already know that. Or did you?
So we need them to make a recommendation. We need to update the policy.
Okay, they did make a recommendation at their meeting.
But it wasn't on their agenda, so.
Okay. The, their membership is up nine, so it's 7:23. They are looking at raising the rate for memberships, probably for next year, which they haven't had any raised rates for 14 years. Let's say it's due. Equipment is due at the end of December, and then expanding or moving on their 24/7, which should be probably by the end of the year.
It'll be up and running by the end of the year?
I hope so.
That's our plan, okay.
And then the CIDC meeting I went to, basically, they served 371 at the play-in breakfast. They had 28 members at their chamber golf team. This doesn't really respond to that, but it was on my sheet. The pickleball court, which we finally got our estimate back for new lighting, is probably $50,000. It was just an estimate, so that probably is not going to happen this year.
Okay. Anyone else? Next on the agenda is comments from the audience.
I'll give you the quick rundown.
Sure.
So there's a little bit going on this weekend. Hopefully, the weather does break Thursday night, and it's not so stinking hot. But we'll take anything that doesn't involve rain. Normally, we schedule, and that's what happens, even though we need rain. We'd love it at night, but just not during the middle of a big event. So just some highlights for this weekend. Again, Thursday, Akira's got free meal and tractor show. Friday, opening ceremonies are at 4:30 out at the statue, Ford Borlaug statue. We've got the tent open, and we're doing the bingo night and the puzzle contest. We're about half full on the puzzle contest, so there's still room to get in. So it's a big old jigsaw puzzle. See who gets done the fastest. So get your best team of four together, and it's a unique puzzle. We're not letting out the, what it is. You get to keep it at the end of the day, because I don't want 10 more puzzles. They all get to keep it. Saturday, we meet tomorrow night with crews to kind of figure out what's going on. So appreciate knowing we'll have three phases done there on the sidewalk. And I think we'll be around the theater quite a bit and all that jazz for the crews. Steak cook-off will be in Beetle Park. So we've got, probably expecting again, between 25 to 30 cooks that'll be showing up. So folks from all over, from probably a dozen states that will be here for that. Mentioned pickleball, thanks for that, for 50K and that. They'll be holding their first annual pickleball tournament this weekend. I think they're looking really good on like the intermediate levels, but if you've got some other, I think your experts join in the fray, or even beginners are doing that. Thanks to Wendy, she's doing the whole open house at the theater. So that's going on. We'll have business market, tours at the farm. Then you've got everything that CUSB's doing, free lunch, bands will be down there at CUSB. Parade is the big thing that I wanted to mention. I don't know if I told you before, but Gwen Bolti and Dale Holstrom are our grand marshals this year. So we did two grand marshals. So excited for that. Again, parade will start, and this is more for the people at home watching. Parade will start at the school, at the high school. So, and then we will turn and come right by here. We're not going to take people downtown. It's looking great, but I don't need people throwing candy into the construction areas and then little kids driving in there. So come down second, end on first, as always, and then they can double back and go to the school if they need to or wherever they need to go. So parade starts at 4:30, line up at the, at the school at around 3:30, 3:45, something like that, and we can get people out. Should work pretty well. And then, you know, the, the big band, we've got Corey Farley in the tent on Saturday night. He'll start around 6:30 or so and go. All day Saturday, those cooks will be cooking. If you want to have the best steak ever, find a veteran for some tickets for the steak dinner that they're doing. Again, these guys donate that steak, so it's a great fundraiser for, for the veterans. VFW, that, that's where you're going to eat if you buy a ticket for that. And then Sunday, the steak cook-off will still be going on. And then the ice cream social at Kellow House. So a lot going on this weekend, but love to get some rain in the overnight, just kind of doing today.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else from the audience? If not, we'll move on to the normal business for tonight. Number one, Brian Stark from Martin Gardner Architecture to provide update on proposed scene shop, project, and specs.
Hi, just here to kind of give you guys a brief update of kind of where we're at with the project that we're working with Wendy and Alex for the last couple of years, just very slowly but surely on this project. Obviously, we're kind of in the big fundraising aspect of the project. So MGA, as an architectural firm, our goal is to not get ahead of these guys with the project. So we're not jumping ahead with extravagant designs or anything as of yet. We're just kind of been keeping in close conversation with these two as far as their progress. Probably moving forward with some of the work that Wendy's doing on the fundraising campaign is probably here in the next few weeks, I'll probably sit down with these two again, rereview the designs, talk, talk a little bit more about some of the specifics of the aesthetic of it, which is something we really haven't addressed yet. Obviously, it's a very historic building. We want to do justice to that building with whatever we do on the back of it, but yet obviously also be conscious of the cost. So still kind of being just, you know, kind of loose with the schedule, a little bit ahead. Kind of my goal with these type of projects is based off of the budget that we establish, making sure that, you know, we'll get into more of the heavy design side of things when the, the city and the group gets about 50% fundraised of the projected budget. Then we feel confident, all right, the project's moving sufficiently ahead, where we'll start working in the phase what we call design development, where we really start looking at how is it going to be built, what are the finishes going to be on the exterior and the interior, or start looking at mechanical plumbing, electrical systems, and potential upgrades that may or may not be tied into the theater, things that we could potentially help with any upgrades on that side. Obviously, the facility is in great shape, but anything we can do through this project to help facilitate that. And then basically stay kind of close to what the budget and fundraising is. And then once the project hits about 85% funded, then we'll get into the nitty-gritty of actually doing the construction documents. And that's just the more detailed information before the project with the anticipation that when we would come to council to get permission to go to bid, we have shown that, yep, we have a good, solid budget. We're comfortable with the numbers and fundraising is in place. Some of the things that we're also going to talk about, depending on what grants that Wendy may be looking at, is the ability to provide some nicer 3D renderings and things that may help with either a public funding campaign or for grants. And those are things that we can negotiate and talk about with them, see what kind of things we could be involved with that, too. So with that, I'm open to answer any questions that you may have regarding the process of the project.
One question I have, the big grant, the $100,000 grant we just got, the project's supposed to be completed by June 30th of 2025. So realistically, what's kind of our goals of getting to these 50 and 85?
So if you're looking at June of 2025 for completion, we would probably want to be under construction by midsummer of next year. Again, it's not a big project. It's not a complicated project, but being under construction by late summer to early fall, that allows contractors to at least get footings, foundations, the structure enclosed before winter. Interior work can be happening over the winter months, wrapping up early to mid-spring to make sure that we're well ahead of that deadline. So that's kind of what we foresee with that size of project. Got a great contractor base here in the, in the city that I'm sure would be interested in bidding the project. And it's a sizable enough project. I think you'll have plenty of interest. But looking ahead, where, you know, after the first of the year, we'd really probably want to seriously start thinking about looking at the design development. Internally, start to finish, this project should take us about 90 days to design, start to finish. Once we get to, yep, we're really good to go, and we can start moving on it. And that just gives our consultants plenty of time to get their designs done, to have plenty of meetings with the committee, make sure that we're not missing anything, that everybody's on the same place, the same page, and then continually updating that budget. Inflation has not been kind in the construction industries the last couple of years. So been trying to stay ahead of it as much as we can, but obviously just to make sure that we're very comfortable with the numbers, that we don't end up going out to bid and having drastically high numbers that weren't expected. So we don't overinflate our estimates. We pride ourselves on being very accurate, but we also vow to be very honest with the city when it comes to spending dollars, so.
So is there an ideal time to be going out for bids, like early spring?
January is always a great time, January, February, for that April-May construction period. Fall construction starts are always good. If contractors can say, hey, you know, we're letting this project in July, August, for like a September construction start, that's always a secondary good time, because again, it's interior work potentially for contractors in the winter. Anymore, a lot of it depends on what the climate is as far as how much work is available to contractors. Right now, contractors are hungry. This spring, contractors should be hungry. So again, I don't see there necessarily there's a bad time, but like I said, historically, it's always been the, the late winter bid for spring start, and then that late summer, early fall bid for fall start are kind of the two bid windows we always shoot for.
How do you think, at this moment, based on the rough design you have, how do you think the cost estimate is holding up?
I think it's doing okay. We typically have every quarter a renewed release for updated budgeting, so we would have had a new budget release the end of July. I haven't gone back and revisited the numbers to that. But I think we're doing pretty good based off the cost per square foot. Now, we haven't taken to a lot of, taken into a lot of account how elaborate we want to get with the exterior. So we have kind of a basis of design, kind of in my mind, when I did the cost opinion in the budgeting. If budgeting or if the fundraising goes well, and we can do some more things that are more aesthetically pleasing and complimentary to the, the theater, we definitely want to take those into account. But that, those will kind of get flushed out during the design development.
Any other questions?
All right.
Thank you. Number two, resolution approving change order number one and number two for the downtown crosswalk reconstruction project. Everybody see what that entailed? A reduction and an addition?
So one is a reduction and one is an addition. So the net result is reducing, a reduction of $28,965.70 for the two.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Fortune.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yes.
Karina.
Yes.
Buska.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Number three, resolution authorizing the city clerk to apply for a rural housing assessment grant with the Iowa Economic Development Authority.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
So just before we vote, this authorizes it but doesn't require it, correct? Because there's some weird things about this. And Michelle and I were talking, and you said that there's going to be a possibility of learning some more about it.
So I'm going to watch the, they have a recorded webinar, and then Iowa State University, people that you were basically contracting with, saying that you will definitely work with them and do their workshop and then implement what they recommend. I kind of want to talk to them and make sure you're not like committed to doing whatever they come up with. So this resolution would just authorize me to move forward with it if we feel comfortable with it. But if we find that we think it'll end up costing us more in the long run, maybe we're better off not doing the grant. But we just, I want to do a little more research before we actually apply. But it's due August 30th, and we don't meet again, so.
Okay, I still make the motion.
Okay, McConnell?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Karina?
Yes.
And Buska?
Yes.
Number four.
Good point you made, though.
Number four, motion to set public hearing to amend the budget for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024.
September 6th.
5:30?
Yep.
Second.
Karina?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Number five, excuse me, resolution accepting the annual financial report for the city of Cresco, Iowa, for the fiscal year 2022 through 2023, and directing the city clerk to file the report with the Iowa auditor of state.
I'll make that motion and comment that I thought it was really interesting reading. Second.
You won't get a second for how she put it.
And wait a second, is that right?
Yeah. Carmen?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Karina?
Yes.
Number six, a motion to approve the outstanding obligation report and review long-term debt balances and amortization special, schedules.
Oh, wait. Second.
Buska?
Yes.
Karina?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Number seven.
Do they have any questions on the amortization schedules and our payments going forward?
Definitely makes you think that, boy, we should have done Seventh Street four years ago.
I know.
At least two.
Yeah.
Number seven, resolution authorizing signers on the depository accounts.
So as part of our segregation of duties, we, as a city clerk, I, I always do the bank reconciliations. And so for segregation, we had the check signer being the deputy clerk. We started that four or five years ago. But then when we had the deputy clerks, two of them resigned there real quickly. I went back to just being the signer on it. Now that we have Anthony hired as the deputy clerk, we'd like to switch that back and have him be the signer, and then the city clerk will be the reconciler on that count. So it's just a little bit of segregation of duties.
Somewhat.
Second. Fortune?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Karina?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Number eight, Scott Thompson to discuss historic downtown Cresco revolving loan fund.
Thank you, and, and thank you for waiting for me.
Come up here if you'd like, please.
I think your bay is copy. Well, my family at CUSB Bank has been very blessed over the last 135 years. We have been located down in beautiful downtown historic Cresco, Iowa. And in celebration of our 135th celebration coming up this Saturday, and since you've done such a great job with the sidewalks, they look fantastic in front of our place and all, and downtown is looking so good. We, my wife and I sat down and talked about doing something for the downtown historic Cresco. And, and that being to, we're going to take $135,000 from the Thompson Charitable Foundation, and my wife and I have $135,000 from the Scott Stephanie Thompson Community Reinvestment Program. And put that together to make $270,000, and, and use that money, now, in a low interest of revolving loan fund that we'd like to have, we'd like to give the city the money to, to put that on. And, and our hope would be, it is for new front facades, it's for additional apartments, renovations, and additions. It's not, it's not for inventory or operating expense. This is really to improve the downtown, because you guys have come forward with the sidewalks, and we have some people that really want to, not only improve their, the, the look of their buildings out front, but also if, if they could get some low interest money and have some apartments, build some apartments down there, what a great thing that is for us. Because the more people we have downtown, the more people will come to downtown. And as we know, we have, we have two, two downtowns. We have Highway nine, and we have the historic downtown Cresco. And so what I'm looking at is, I'm suggesting the four-block quadrant, which is the surge building up to, you know, Texaco Station, and then the block over where Bill Myers is, and then down to, to the Iowa State Extension Service, that four-block area. And, and the idea would be behind this is, just to kind of talk about the loan, would be, the loans could be up to $90,000. It's not just for customers that do business with CUSB Bank, it's also for Cresco Bank Trust customers also. We don't want to have this loan be more than 50% of the financing of a property, because of course, you know, the bank definitely makes money, too, right? And, but the idea behind it is, it's on a five-year balloon. And the first two years is principal only, right? So they're going to start making principal payments right away. Year three, it goes to 3% from year three to five, and then, and then it balloons. Now, it could be on a 10- to 12-year amortization, but in five years, we'd like to have them out. So Dave's out, and then Nate can come in. And so we want to keep that money rotating, having people be able to use that money. And we think that, based on the amortizations I've run, that, that with no interest the first two years, you're making payments on it, then in five years, you're going to have enough equity that you can go to a conventional, you know, bank or finance company, whatever, friend, whatever. So I'm excited about the program. I, I think it could be a shot in the arm. I threw it by some of the retailers downtown, talked to Dan about it, talked to some other people about it, and, and they're excited about it. I, but to make this thing work, of course, I want to do this thing, and I want to do it the right way. Now, what we have is, we have a Thompson Charitable Foundation, which is a private foundation, and there's tax laws on that. And then from my standpoint, Scott Stephanie Thompson, we can give the money to the city, that's not a problem. The private means that it needs to be for the public, so we feel that this covers that, because anybody in downtown can go ahead and find this. Talking to Jason and to Michelle, Jason's been a big help on this, putting this together, actually, Lord Smith, all this. And, and I think, you know, if we had, we have a committee, it'd be a lot like what we have with the Cresco, City of Cresco, where we have a person from, from each bank. We have a city council representative on it, one or two. Jason would be there. I'd like to have a member of the Thompson family on there, a representative, whether that's Mike Drace or somebody like that, that'd be great. The only other thing I, I would ask, and Michelle said she thought we could do, is I'd kind of like to have the fund in the, the fund with the money in it at CUSB Bank, if that's possible. I know we have an agreement way back when the county goes one bay, the city goes the other, but I thought... But we do want this open to, you know, both financial institutions to go and help and make loans people need.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Well, you know, again, we've been downtown Cresco for 135 years. What you don't know is that the first year that the bank was in operation was actually where tax accounting, insurance office is right now. They used to be hair FX, 13 shareholders that started out at CUSB Bank on April 1st, 1888. And they, they didn't have, the bank wasn't running, so. I also want to invite everybody here to come to our open house, which is on Saturday. And we're going to show, take people through the bank from 11 to 1 o'clock in the afternoon. And we have 75 pictures of Cresco, black and white, from the 1800s all the way up to 1960s, which we're excited about. In fact, my wife and I hung each one of them and we're still talking. The girls at the bank said, the guy says, man, they're still talking. Anyway, so we're excited about this program and I hope you are too. I think it could be really good for downtown Cresco.
I agree. Yep. Yeah. No, this is great. Thank you for doing that. And it's, it'll be ready to go pretty quick?
Yeah, very quick. I'll, we'll get the account going and write you some checks. And Michelle's been wonderful to work with. My gosh, of course, Jason's a pro, so.
He's something.
Scott? This is really generous, but that doesn't keep me from having a question about your proposed wording. The first question is you say, this is a mathematician speaking, you say located between First Avenue East and West and Third Avenue and so on. Does that mean the buildings on First Avenue East and West are included?
That is actually not just the main street, but on the sides too. But there aren't a lot of upper story housing on the side.
Right, but I just, so.
So for example, you have the Eminem, which I think has the ability to have an apartment upstairs.
But I'm more concerned about the buildings on the other side of First. So although this wouldn't be what you're thinking of, would it include the old Cresco Heating Event?
Well, it's not in what?
Well, it's so, so we have to specify what between means. You mean on the included side, but not the outside, right? So if the fire department would be included, but Cresco Heating Event wouldn't be?
That's on the other side of the street.
OK.
I think that'd be fair. I think that'd be fair how we wrote it. But you notice how it also says that the loan fund committee reserves the rights for review other properties on a case-by-case scenario. And Scott and I were thinking that there may be things like that exist, Amy. There may be things that exist even on Highway Nine that were five years down the road and we've hit some of these folks that we keep knocking on all the time to do something. And it made me want to look at something else. And so we did, we did put that clause in there. We want to leave that up to the committee. That would be a makeup of the, of the city and Thompsons and the banks. For, I mean, we're a pick, like, for example, this is a Boring Building, you know, right next to the chamber of the second, second story. And that's historic. Could be an exception. And who knows? If that were to sell and somebody wanted to make apartments upstairs, I think that's fantastic.
So I use the example of the fire department. Does this include improvements to civic property such as the courthouse in Seale? I don't think there's anything in there that would dis-eligibilize them.
Well, again, you know, you want taxpayers, you want property values to increase because that, that those.
I don't disagree with what you're saying. I don't think, I'm just saying that I don't think there's anything in eligible use of funds. Do you want to say civic governments are not included?
Yeah.
One of my concerns was, this is pretty narrow. And I understand that's what you're aiming at, but what if after we have a rush of people, Dan does his because Jason is going to ride him like crazy, we get all that done and there's no take up five, 10 years from now? And everybody who's going to improve it is improved it. What do we do then? According to this, the money just sits there and does nothing. Can't we cross that bridge when we get to it? Well, I mean, I guess I'm asking Scott.
I think, I think then we have to expand it.
OK, so your vision would be to come back and?
Have to expand it.
OK.
I mean, this is, again, this is for better or less Cresco and they get people, I think I, what are they here, 40%, is it 40% of the upper story of buildings are, have apartments that's empty? Probably maybe more like 60% now, but 40% are vacant. Are vacant? Yeah.
So 60% of the buildings have apartments and 40% of that 60% is vacant?
About 50, 50, 15 years ago. We've made some inroads whether we want to.
Yeah. 40% just because they're not up to current living standards or just not updated or?
There's empty.
Just, are they livable at this point?
Absolutely not.
OK. That's the question I was asking.
Like a record that's, you know, if you wanted to, you could put three for nice apartments. Do just same things with Mark Cooper. But we're talking like old, you know, you still got two wood wire. You got, you probably got to go in there and do some serious rehab. That's why they've sat for so long. And you know, if you think about this thing, if down the road is, as we evolve and people retire and stuff, and we get somebody that has a micro business who ends up with a building that has two apartments upstairs, which generates income that pays for their PITI and they're only counting on 50% of their sales coming from Cresco, their block away from what, the post office. And so you get those micro businesses out of their homes and you bring them in downtown. So you're trying to think down the road of that, how that would work.
So my last question is, does the term other structural additions or improvements include solar? You knew I was going to ask that, Scott. It saves people money. It allows them to do things, but I.
Well, you know, it is an improvement. Be something that we can discuss.
OK.
We ever got the gym underway that we try and solar around that.
Gym, oh, that, OK. Now, the gym has got, I could go into a long thing, but because of the demand charge at the gym, solar just absolutely doesn't work up there. We could have lunch and discuss that because it really sucks.
How do you really feel? Any, any other questions for Scott?
We could roll down that next week. I'm going to try and get through this weekend and.
I think so. It's good.
Do we need a motion to?
So the next item is to pass that resolution?
Oh, OK. So we're done with questions? Any questions for us then? All right.
Thanks, Amy. Thanks for what you're doing on Main Street. Man, it looks fantastic.
Yeah, it's going to look nice when it's done. Yeah. Thank you. Final item on the agenda is resolution establishing a fund within the city's account fund, number one, 62, CUSB Historic Downtown Cresco Revolving Loan Fund.
So moved.
Second.
McConnell?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Greener?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Greener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Meaning adjourned. Thank you.